We're all on our own schedule today.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jenna, when you're ready, could you please have your own vote? Bryce?
Here.
Niaeville?
Absent.
George?
With notice.
Green?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Nyvel?
Here.
Randazzo?
Here.
Thank you. Next up is the approval of the agenda for this evening.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented for the July 25th, 2022 meeting.
Support.
We have a motion on the table by trustee Nyvel, supported by trustee Randazzo. Any questions or comments at this time? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, that motion carries five zero. Next up this evening is the approval of the council minutes from the hearing minutes of June 27th and the regular meeting of the June 27th. We are looking for a motion on those as well. Unless somebody wants something pulled out, it's up to you guys.
I have a motion to approve the public hearing minutes of June 27th, 2022, and regular meeting minutes of June 27th, 2022.
Support.
We have a motion on the table by trustee Green, supported by trustee Nyvel, to accept both minutes from June 27th, 2022. Questions or comments? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero, thank you. Item number six, this evening's acceptance items include the finance report from the village treasurer for the month of June. Item number seven this evening is the disbursements, which will be ending July 18th, 2022. Your motion on the table.
You'll notice we only printed the full treasurer's report one time, and it's later in your packet, we didn't want to print twice.
I make a motion to pay the disbursements in the amount of $22,879.30 for the dates of 6/16/2022 through 7/15/2022.
Support.
We have a motion on the table by trustee Nyvel, supported by trustee Hayden. Do we have any questions or comments at this time? Hearing none, Jenna, could we please have a roll vote? Green?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Nyvel?
Yes.
Randazzo?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
That motion carries five zero. Item number eight this evening is our public comment. Please remember, at this time, it's on agenda items only. You're more than welcome to kind of stand up, raise your hand, introduce yourself. Please remember, you do have three minutes, so we would kind of love for you to keep on schedule with that. We'll just kind of give you a little nod when you're coming to the end of your time, but anybody? Ted, please, if you step to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Ted Davis, I'm the current president of the Brandon Township Cert Team, and I'd like to bring attention to the 5K walk run for, on the second day of the September Fest. We have some safety concerns for the participants. Safety concerns being the start time is the same time that September Fest is going to be reopened, and we're kind of concerned about runners kind of mixing in with the shuttle buses and vendors coming in on the live roads. And we're wondering if we can actually get this start time backed up to 7:30. 7:30 to 9:00, that would be perfect, you know, for this occasion, because the roads will not be as live when they're doing this run, because time and time again, even if they say they're going to stay on the sidewalks, never happens. So we're worried about runners being, mixing in with the shuttle buses and vendor traffic coming in. We're trying to avoid potential accidents, you know, people getting hit, somebody not paying attention, somebody getting bumped into. That's basically what I have, is to request that it be backed up till 7:30.
Thank you, appreciate your input. Anyone else at this time? Agenda items only, please. All right. Thank you. Next up this evening is the approval of the consent agenda. This month it includes the Ortonville DDA meeting from May 9th, the planning commission meeting from June 7th, the township public library meeting from May 24th, the community historical meeting from the 14th, the downtown development authority meeting from 27th, the village attorney invoice from July 7th, the wait finding committee meeting from July 19th, and the special events permit for the Brandon High School Student Council Homecoming Parade, which is September 30th. Looking for a motion on those.
I make a motion to approve the agenda, the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
We have a motion on the table by trustee Randazzo, supported by trustee Green. Do we have any questions or comments at this time? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, that motion carries five zero. Item 10 is the items from the trustees, and we will start at the beginning of the alphabet, if you don't mind, to work that way. Keith is not here this evening, Ted is not here this evening, hey!
Basically, we, as far as personnel committee, we are still waiting on the attorney for their blessing, if you will, we've sent them, and we've not heard back. Hopefully, we're going to hear soon, and we'll need again to talk about where we go from there. And whatever, if it's approved, I mean, if they approve what we put, then we'll bring it to council for a vote. That's all.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, that's it, that's all.
All right, good evening.
I've been in synchronization with Ryan on IT committee topics, and we're still waiting on certain items to get information back from, on a few items, so we have not scheduled a meeting yet, as soon as we have all that information, we will be scheduling an IT committee meeting. And I think Ryan also, in manager report, has some updates too. Well, you want to, you want to just share that right now?
It just happened today, it was scheduled, but we'll be doing the email migration the week of Labor Day, so starting September 6th through the week, throughout that week, we'll start email migration, more to come, we'll talk about it at the August meeting, but it does impact all of it, the village council, the planning commission, and staff, so more to come.
So basically, we're moving forward on some topics, but we haven't had a meeting because we're still waiting on some pending information.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Next up is Melanie, please.
We wait finding met on the 19th, and our target is to be able to present wait finding, have La Cotta Group present at the September council meeting. Planning Commission, their meeting is our joint meeting on August 4th, so we do not have a meeting on the 2nd, because everybody, please get out and vote. That's the election, and then we have the joint meeting on the 4th, and we will be, I believe it's still on target, to show the zoning ordinances at that time. I think it's still on target.
Zoning ordinance and form-based code for our downtown, super exciting stuff.
It is kind of interesting though, yeah, and we've been, we've been working hard on it, so that'll be great to be able to present that to everyone. And then, of course, Heritage Garden, Ron Campbell's here this evening to present the vision of the Heritage Garden.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you very much. And how about you, Tony, please?
The Parks and Rec didn't really meet, there was a September Fest meeting July 12th at the library, and our next one is going to be August 9th. And that's really all.
All right. And Ryan, is there anything you wanted to add? Any ideas?
I think so the, your packet has the historical society minutes. The streets committee has not met, but the bridge items are the big project right now in there, in your packet, we'll talk about those in a few minutes, so I think that's it.
I see.
Yeah, we're working on a couple of things on RRC, but no movement yet.
Still waiting on those big things to wrap up?
Zoning ordinance, mostly.
We're getting there. We're working behind the scenes with absolutely everybody. It's moving. All right, thank you, anything else you can think of?
Just DDA.
Right, all right. DDA updates, we would love to thank absolutely everybody for an amazing fireworks event. The community pulls through as usual with their attendance, with their donations. Thanks to absolutely everybody who was involved before, during, and after, all of the hard work and all of the responses and all of the feedback has been wonderful. So, again, much appreciated, and it was nice to have a first post-COVID fireworks. We've been a couple of years. DDA, with the new fiscal year, has been working on updating and detailing all of their projects that they would kind of like to narrow down for at least the time being. As you know, things come up and move and they're fluid, but everybody kind of, they've got a chance to detail where you're at, what you'd like to see, and what we think are the most important events at the time. So that was something that we really liked the new budget year. So, as you know, the budget information is also there and available, and set placed as well in July, so that's at the end of June, but our July meeting. And the next event is the, August what day? Barbecue takeover.
Barbecue.
August 11th, my calendar's not on me. So 4:00 to 9:00 PM, barbecue takeover. Do we have guestsmen as to how many at this point? So, 10 amazing barbecue trucks that you can smell from 10 miles away. Come on down and support, volunteers are always welcome as well. All right, that's all for now. Anybody else, any further? We're good. Next up this evening, we will begin with our unfinished business, and the item that we have is the special event permit for the Ortonville 5K Run Walk. Who's going to start us on that? Tony?
I'd like to make a motion for the 5K Run Walk at September Fest, September 25th, to change the requested start time of 9:00 till 7:30 AM and finish at 9:00 AM.
Support.
All right, we have a motion on the table by trustee Randazzo, supported by trustee Hayden. Questions, comments, discussion?
Do you have an idea of how many people are going to be walking?
How many have already signed up, or how many they plan to have?
At the, we did have a meeting, the September Fest committee meeting on the 12th of July, the organizers did not show up for that, so we don't have any information on that. Fred's been on vacation as well. And there's, the only contact is a person listed on this permit. I have an error.
So they didn't make the decision to change the time?
I'm sorry.
They have not made that decision to change the time?
It was requested, I believe, Ryan had spoken to him, and their main concern, which is not a safety issue, is that their people would have to come in early to register people.
But that's what I'm asking, they did not request this time change, you're requesting her?
I'm requesting on behalf of the Cert team and safety, or mostly safety and Cert team. We've done enough of these that we know what it entails.
So it's been approved by the police, it's been approved by the fire, the signs were out, it's been paid, people have registered, and we as an outside entity feel comfortable making the decision for them, not requesting them to make that decision, that's what I'm not understanding.
I did reach out to them and ask them and explain the whole situation to them, or what our concerns were, and that would have been brought up at the July 12th meeting, had they showed up. Nobody from that sponsorship showed up. And the other thing that we had found out is that even though these are requested, time that they're requesting, if council does not feel that that is a safe time, that we can adjust it.
Yeah, if I can add to that, it's not that we're some outside entity. We are the final approver for this permit, not some outside entity. So, the police and fire okayed and said, yes, this looks okay to them as is. As a council, we certainly have the discretion to review, and if we have any concerns of our own, we certainly should be able to request changes of the applicants. I think, I think our, the Cert president presented very well the safety issues, especially considering the September Fest event also going on concurrently. I noticed one thing that was not brought up yet, which if you, if you take a look at the route, it's coming up Davis Alley, goes across over up Narren Street and across Ball. They state that the runners will be on the sidewalks, but there's no sidewalk on Davis Street. There's no sidewalk on Narren Street, there's no sidewalk on much of the portion of Ball Street. So those streets do not have a sidewalk that can isolate or separate those runners from the traffic, and by 9:00 AM, there's going to be a lot of traffic through the downtown area in particular on Davis Alley. That's where I would have the greatest security and safety concern is. Starting at once everything's live and active in September Fest, it's going to be very difficult to have those runners isolate from the vehicle traffic, and that would be where I think I would agree with the Cert president and Cert team evaluation, and Tony, that it would be much better if they could start earlier and try to have the run concluded before the main September Fest event starts.
I would just like to state that I'm not comfortable having somebody making decisions for somebody on their permit. I am comfortable accepting or denying their permit, but I'm not comfortable with them not, any input to change their permit. That's just my personal opinion. I would be totally fine saying, no, I'm sorry, we can't accept it, but without them telling us whether that's going to work for them, that's, I don't believe us as an outside entity can make that decision for their, but that's just my opinion.
Do we really want to just deny it because it doesn't fit? I mean, you would rather that than, than augment it a little bit so that they could still do their event?
What if they tell us they can't, they're not here to make that decision, that's what I'm saying?
We could do a-
Then, yeah.
We could do, just like we do on, on the planning commission does with, with site permits and stuff, there could be a conditional approval, where we say, we can approve this request if the start can, time can be changed earlier to 7:30. I would suggest that might be the best way we could do it, without changing it, but make it a conditional approval, and then it's up to them if they will accept that condition or not.
That would be nice. Thank you, Melanie, any thoughts?
No, I mean, I, the conditional might be the more proper way to do it, but it, since this is really for safety, and I just think it's much smarter to have it earlier at 7:30 and not be in line with the food trucks backing up and the trailers, because if we've tried to come downtown when that's happening, it's to have runners and they don't see runners. So I think it's very smart to change the time, but they have, this is Alliance group, correct? They have a pretty big group, I'm surprised that somebody could not come and be there for registration and-
That's, again, and that, my understanding is that was the only reason why, when they were approached the first time, they didn't want to change the time. Because everything that they're doing, from what I heard at the meeting prior to this last one, was that it would all be online registration.
Oh.
So all they have to do is change a date, and whoever already signed up for it, I'm sure they have emails, they can send out an email as well.
Or change the time.
To let them know that they're changing the time.
Okay.
So there's no monetary loss to them.
Right, it's just-
There is if people can't attend at that time. Do they get their registration feedback, can they?
Well, that's, that's up to the Lions.
That's what I'm saying, there is a monetary change possibly. It, each case depends on whether they're available or not.
I will say, in my personal opinion, I don't think there'll be a monetary issue, but they're, so I'm open to that.
Yeah, just one other comment to, to address that topic. We hadn't, we haven't fully approved their permit, and yet they're already registering people, so I would say that that was, they were jumping the gun. If they have any monetary impact, it's really on them because they jumped the gun and started registering people before the permit was fully approved, so I don't really think we can take responsibility for that.
I didn't say that, I'm just saying, stayed making the statement that there is a possible monetary change.
Yes.
You know, if I'm signing up for something at a certain time, I may or may not be able to turn it different time. Whether they get their money back or not is not our issue, but it is a concern.
And they have almost two months to go out, inform everybody about any updates or changes, and make adjustments.
I did speak to the event applicant last week, I was trying to connect him with Fred, but we kept missing each other, all three of us. The, his other concern was that the sun rises, according to the farmer's almanac, the sun rises at 7:24 AM on September 24th in Ortonville, Michigan. So his concern was registering and getting started in the dark, as well as the cold, because it's a lot colder at the end of September than it is in July. So that was the other concern. I, I thought that was a valid concern, so I tried to put him in touch with Fred and did not make that connection prior to the meeting. So if it is the interest of the council to approve conditionally, like we said, I'd be happy to reach out to him again, connect those dots between him and Fred, and if it is agreed upon, we can change the start time to 7:30, then advise the council of that, but encourage him to continue registration, and we could approve it finally at our next meeting, which happens prior to the event.
I mean, would, how long would it take? I do not run people, so I don't know how long it takes. It does take, okay, and say, it started at 8:00, but that would end at 9:30.
And there are, I mean, we've done the Jingle Bell Run in December, I mean, it's possible, it's-
Yeah.
Dusk and sunrise are two different, or dawn and sunrise are two different things.
We've done a lot of the library runs too, and they start, they always start it early in the morning.
But I'm saying daylight wise, you know?
And because they have runner and walkers, I mean, yeah, it would take a good hour and a half sometimes to clear the course.
Okay.
I know those, they do take a good amount of time.
Anybody else have additional different thoughts, or are we ready for a vote?
Do, do we want to amend that, or just?
Well, I was just going to ask Jenna, would you like to read?
I'm not looking to do a conditional, like the, the backside of this too was that before they did anything, they were supposed to bring us back to September Fest Committee for our meeting, before they even submitted this, and they didn't. So, you know, and again, I, I will say this, I did forget, but I will agree with Ryan that the almanac says 7:24 on that day. But, again, it doesn't have a lot to do with safety and, in a sense that we will have Cert members out there on the streets, you know, making sure the people are going where they need to be. The final thought on that is, the buses are scheduled to start at 9:00 in the morning, 9:15. And that traffic down Cedar Street, Crossing Mill, down Davis Alley, back to South Street, is the only live road we have besides church, coming around the bend here, which is also going to be kind of congested because we have the car show that day too. No, we don't have a car show on Sunday, I apologize, that's Saturday, but that's, that's what I have.
Anybody else before we vote?
Please.
Jenna, could you please read the motion for us? Change the requested start time from 9:00 AM to 7:30 AM and finish at 9:00 AM for the 5K Run Walk at September Fest, September 25th. And Tony, you're good with it? Okay, you're good with that?
Very supportive.
Oh, wait.
But I'm fine.
Oh, you're right, Larry did. When you said, are we going to amend it, I was thinking you supported, are you good with it?
Well, with maintaining the original?
Right.
Well, I, I don't need to be good with the original because we haven't amended it, and I already supported the original.
And that's what I'm saying, so you're comfortable with where you're at?
Yes.
Okay. All right, then we are ready for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion carries for one, thank you very much. Next up is our new business, and the first item is the presentation regarding the Heritage Garden, and who is going to start and introduce Ron?
All right, I will introduce Ron, and you want to, are you going to get the little pull-up? Okay, thank you. Ron Campbell, sorry, I'm trying to be rude here. He is with Oakland County, and you are the player preservation architect with Oakland County. He actually designed the vision of the heritage space for us, and our goal was to create a place, not just a design. And Ron took all the survey information that we had for the community that we had mailed or that was online, and took the wants of the community and the desires and what they'd like to see, and he designed a space with all those assets and ideas in mind from the beginning. So just keep an open mind, and basically, this will be done in phases, and Ron will explain a little further to you. This isn't something that will happen overnight, it's something that we'll, we work on each year as we raise money or budget money. So it is a slow transition, but it's something that we want to have a goal to attain to, so with that, Ron?
Thank you for having me, and I do have to correct something, though, and that is, I worked with a committee, they are the designers, and people in this community are the designers. I merely interpreted what they were telling me. Start with that, and I, I forgot my glasses today, so I can't see anything up there.
Do you want to stand up there?
Well, I can see everybody this way, and they can hear me this way, so. I mean, I can see an image, so, I've seen it before, but thank you. And I, I also have to say that I, I think this has been one of the best committees. I've been with Oakland County now for 16 years, and this is one of the best committees I've worked with. When I came in, they already had their survey, they had already talked, and excellent, why don't you go to the next slide?
And the presentation's behind you guys, if you want to turn around, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine. And I, I should say too, you, you might find this a little strange, because some of the slides in here, you're going to know all about, we'll get to a couple of them. But it was formatted so that we can use this and replicate it with some minor changes to go out for grants. So with that, that was the committee. I know that's the index, I can't read anything off of it, but that's all right. And I, that was the introduction, a little bit on the committee and what they did.
Did you have this?
Oh, that will help, yeah, thank you. And this was the, the survey that was going on, I think you'll have to hit that a couple of times for it to populate. Excellent turnout, in fact, if you go to the next slide, we kind of have a summary, because what we did is, we took all the, they at first took all the responses. because what we did is, we took all the, they at first took all the responses. I know I've done these surveys before, and you always get little, well, this is kind of saying the same thing, and this is saying the same thing, and they had to condense them. And so we broke it down into demographics, uses, and elements. And as you can see, this was excellent participation. 67 responses, 37% from the village, 46 from the township, and 17% were visitors. 93% were users, current users of the park, good age distribution. And this was an incredible, 24% of those responding said they would volunteer. And that's remarkable, in my estimation, my experience in surveys like this, to have that amount of the population wanting to participate. The uses, as you can see, we put them down in hierarchy. 90% wanted social gathering that included the current events that are going on there. Expanding, 8% want additional activities such as art, exhibits, holiday markets, pop-ups, shops, things like that. And 68% said they'd like it for year-round use. So we took all that in, and to the right, you can see kind of our interpretation of all that. The elements, highest was benches for seating, lighting, flower and planters, soft edge to everything. 46% tables and chairs. And I think came through loud and clear was get rid of the picnic tables. And understandably, as I get older, it's, it's hard for me to get in and out of those picnic tables. So those chairs that you can pull away and sit down makes it a lot easier. Combination of grass and flowers, gazebo, warming station for winter events, bike rack, non-traditional as they said. So you can see all the elements there. So the next thing we did with the committee, and you can go to the next slide. Turn the page here. We, we always look at, oh, this is the points of interest. This is a slide you probably should know pretty well. But as we go out for grants, those reviewers won't understand Ortonville and what it's all about. And so we put this map in just to help in that, orient them, seeing where the park is and all the things that you have going in the downtown area. So then we looked at the site specifically. We looked at the natural factors that were influencing this, where the prevailing winds are coming from, solar angles, both winter and summer breezes, prevailing winds. Next slide will be the circulation. Two-way streets on both corners. Of course, Mill Street has to, that can be closed, and that opens it up to events. So any park activities could spill out into the north, towards Mill Street. What is it, Church?
Yes.
Church.
To the east, yeah.
Boy, I got that. I am in Ortonville. Church Street can't be closed, emergency vehicles use that. And last but not least, and probably one of the most important things in a site like this, is the utilities. And as you see, most of them are probably at the midway point south. The circle that you see there indicates that's a utility pole. There's nothing connected to it, but it's a stay pole that holds up the other poles going up the street. So we thought that was kind of important to keep that. Gas, electric, all that comes in at the southern point of the site. And you'll see later on, we use that very carefully to where we position things in the complex. Next page, and that was just kind of a space use, if I can get to it. How we kind of divided the area up in a very blockish way. We set everything to the south as utilities and support. We had a little screening between that area and the event space to the north. You can see the, the screening is the checkered, green and white. And that will be, as you'll see, achieved with shrubs. We also outlined the faces. We have two park faces along both streets. Then we have the historic face, which is along the, this hall. This will be a little difficult to see, but it's the original drawing, I guess, of the park. And we have different features on it, 1 through 12. We tried to look at the, the park, and this is one unit. Being the historic structure, we think this would open us up to more grants. Anytime you can have an outdoor facility, a park, garden center, and combine that with a historic structure, it just, it's a little more appealing to the grant providers. One of the things we looked at to, so people have a wayfinding, you talked about wayfinding earlier, we thought we'd do that with trees. I don't know if you've noticed, but you've used that as an example along Mill Street all the way. Beginning with Memorial Park, there's a group of trees there. You get down to the parking lot and the entry there, there's a group of trees there. So we thought, why not begin to use that as a calling card, an entry identifier, right here at the park? And so we're suggesting that there'd be a group of trees at that park entry. The other thing that we kind of took a little glimpse at, and that was Memorial Park has that low brick wall. And what a perfect idea is to use that also for this park, kind of bookends at either end of town. That wall could also be impromptu seating for those that come in and don't have a chair and haven't brought their lawn chair. They've got some wall along there that they can use. Inside the park itself, you'll see that there's both hard surface and soft surface, grass areas. This is at the request of the public survey that was done. We've divided just about evenly, 50/50. Again, as it was pointed out by Melanie, was that this is a vision long-term. We don't see this being accomplished overnight, but it could be accomplished in stages. And I think you've outlined four stages that it could be accomplished in. But that could even vary. So you'll see everything on here from a pavilion with a future toilet to things that could be accomplished tomorrow with tables and chairs. So it's all how fast we want to move. I will say, and I think we went to the next slide, it gives you a little better, more of a color rendition of this as it was developed. And you can see how the utilities have all remained in place. We're hoping not to disturb any of them at any phase of the park's development. One of the first things we suggested, I think the committee suggested, was we have this evergreen screen at the back of the stage. This is an open stage area. We have an open, or evergreen stage, it would stay green year-round, like in Arbor Vida. That would provide a backdrop to the stage when and if it goes in. But it would also serve as a buffer, a screening for the resident that is primarily south. So it serves several purposes. Immediately in front of that would be a lawn grass area. And immediately in front of that, as we move north, would be brick pavers, what you see in red there. That would be a pathway. The thought is that that could be part of the donation, a brick donor program, where you could buy the brick and have your inscription put on the brick as part of raising funds for this. Then immediately north of that would be the hard surface area. And in front of that would be a smaller grass area and walls and shade trees. Food trucks would utilize Church Street, parking where they do now. But I was at your last meeting, four trucks was not enough, let me tell you. You really, man, I, I was blown away. 15 trucks, I think, were here. Incredible. I mean, that's, my hands off to you. So then some of the elements that we talked about, the street piece, you can see how you form those canopies as you walk down the street. And right now, when you get to the parking lot and you look to the east, what you see is in the lower right-hand corner, which you see the city offices, one, but nothing there to draw you on further. So those same things that you see in the left could be developed at the park entry too. And that's one thing that'd bring you down there. The next page shows you the, the walls that we're talking about and how effective they are at the Memorial Park. So it'd be two, I'm sorry, yeah, to kick it or something.
Oh, is that you?
It's my, I, I hope it doesn't go off and nobody. Oh.
Oh, they really want you.
Okay, so I'll talk louder and you won't. But I think it's a great opportunity to pick up on some of the elements you've already started with. And those are beautiful walls, sustainable, long-term. So if we could develop the same thing here, it's a perfect match for the park entry. Next page is the amenities. You remember we talked about a, yeah, I got my glass case, but there's no glasses. You can tell how organized I am, right? Okay, so the bright, you know, and these are just examples. It's not fixed in any way. But we said, well, we just don't want that traditional old rusty bike stand that rusts in a few years. Want to keep it nice, keep it modern, so that's fine. Pump station or repair station is very popular. Tables and chairs, again, benches. Still room for the memorials and plaques that are not relocated to Memorial Park could be displayed along this outside wall here on the west of the hall. There'd be a seating area, and even some garden sculptures, if you'd like. The wall washers, we talked about lighting, and that was very important in the survey. What you see here, it's not what we're playing to the buildings, but it's the effect of the lighting, and that's the wall washers. And we thought, you know, that'd be, what you want to do is, you want to see the results of the lighting, not, not the source. And when you do that, it gives a very inviting and unintimidating space. And so if we could wash the wall of this building and have that light the park, if we in the future could light the walls of the pavilion, that again would help light the park. So it would be very subtle and unintrusive lighting, shouldn't affect any of the neighbors. So those were the important elements. I think the last, well, we got a couple of pages, oh. This is one thing that is gaining a lot of momentum right now, and that's universal design. We have an aging population, I'm one of many that are aging as we speak right now. So the idea is, there's a lot of grants out there that would be, we'd be appealing to, that have this as a program for, focus. And so we developed one page. For example, everything is totally accessible. The restroom that we'd be proposing, that would go in the future, would be a family restroom, used by anybody. So a parent with a child, you've got a place that everyone's welcome to, to use. Those that have mobility issues, age, they can get anywhere in the park. There's all kinds of seating conditions, both soft as well as hard-edged seating conditions. So this is kind of how we would appeal to that grant group. It would be through pages like this that would be developed specifically for that grant and inserted into the submittal. Last and not least, would be the pavilion, and that was one thing I remember Matt saying, we don't want a traditional pavilion, and I think that came through with the survey too. They weren't sure about a pavilion. I said, well, there are other pavilions out there. These two examples, one is Highland Station and the other is in Farmington. And I think when they saw that, they said, okay, we never thought of a pavilion like that. If we could do something like that, that would be worth it. And so that's how the pavilion that you see in this bottom rendering shows. That's just an open pavilion. Storage, a little small storage building on the right, and on the left would be the family toilet room. That would be plum. So if we would, had some donor that would come in and say, hey, let's build it, we've got a place for it. We know that that's not going to affect anything else that we do in the park. So this could be developed and, and put in place at any time. And that's the nice thing about master planning this, is that as money or different grants become available, we can go after those and tailor this. That's kind of it in a nutshell. I guess the last one is just the last picture is the one of the park with the, maybe how it could be used. Try to answer any questions. I mean, we have done some costs, not complete. And kind of a phase.
It should be, is it, should be in that book that you have?
Oh, it should, okay. Oh, yeah.
Costs, and then I have the grants, and the grant ideas, so that's.
So you can see there's a lot of the costs to be determined. Right now, it's very difficult to hit prices on this. It's difficult even to estimate them, because the cost and availability are changing overnight. The very last page is, two pages, are grant ideas. Everything from corporate foundations, funding, to individual donations. And this is where the brick program, so we try to hit the whole gap. And John wanted me to remember to remind you, if that makes sense, remember to remind you that Main Street Oakland County has grants that would be approved for this. The placemaking grants from Genesis Credit Union. Flagstaff, or Flagstar Bank. I think you already have some of this this year for it.
Yeah, I think they did this last year, yep.
So those would be available for some projects like this too. But we'll help you out on that. So with that, I'll entertain any questions with that 15 minutes. They only gave me 15 minutes.
I just, I have one question. By the way, I see these, I love them, and I think it's awesome. But on, on page 16, where it has the wall, where, where is the accessible right?
Oh, it's down either side of the ramp. If you see the stage there?
No, no, I'm sorry.
To the town hall.
I'm assuming there's one there, and it's just being blocked because of the wall, but is there something?
Well, actually, because you had the middle ramp on this one, where it's more of a side ramp that puts up against the building.
So it's just, it's hidden from the picture?
Well, the, what's proposed long-term would be a new ramp, replacing the one that's there.
Yeah, I was just wondering if it was going to be.
Oh, in the same location.
Same place, or is it going to be moved?
Moved closer to the building.
See, he's showing it right here, it's not showing it.
Oh, yeah. Well, it's showing it, it's a little higher wall.
Yeah.
That would be, is behind it, exactly, yep. And that's as we replace the one out here, as, rather than repair it. If we can get a little more frontage on the park, it helps us out with balancing out the walls and a little more inviting.
Yeah, because the ramp would actually be moved over.
Over, over.
Over this way, towards the, yes, yes.
Because I just kept thinking about putting it right here between the buildings.
We thought about that, but that tree, yep, yep. But we, yeah, yeah, right?
They wouldn't let me do things like that. We need to save that tree.
Everybody loves a tree, and I think it was donated from a family years ago, was it? Okay. So, yeah, but that was, Tony, exactly what we thought at one point too.
And is this a true representation of what type of stage area that would be, or is that just?
It's a concept. I, I like to think of it as being the true representation, but I know there's a long way between my ideas and when they get implemented. The, the idea was to keep this very low-key, not a high stage, more of a platform, six or eight inches off the ground, which made the accessibility of the ramp on either side much more achievable. So very low-key, access really from either side.
And there would, there would be electrical power inside there too?
Yes, yeah, so that way music and bands are singing, movies. Absolutely, I mean.
I'm a movie guy.
Um, but yes.
And, and, you know, this is where some of the, like, barrier-free accessibility, the sound system, when you get to put that in. Well, maybe there should be some headsets that would be available. Signing, you know, any signage in the park could be for braille. So all those things will go into those little submittal sheets as to what grant we're going after.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. You really did a wonderful job. We see this to fruition. That would be nice.
I have a lot of questions. Do you have anything more, Ken?
Do you have anything more, Kay?
Okay. One of my concerns, and again, thank you for the presentation, all the effort you put into this. It does look really nice, but one of my biggest concerns is I did a little bit of math on all the current estimated costs and that does not include a lot of TBD items. And the total cost to do this with those estimates right now is coming to between $127,000 and $154,000, which is something that is simply not affordable. I don't know what we could expect on an annual basis to put towards park development, but we also have trails and our other park areas and other improvements like the concession stand on our ball field that we're working up right now. So we have, you know, this isn't the only park in our community.
I understand.
And we have a, and we have a budget for park development, but it has to cover all the parks and...
Part two, as they did say, there would be grants that would be entitled to you.
Yes.
Larry Gohman.
I just wanted to say though is that I think that we need to take a look at all the elements in the proposal and try to come up with, maybe that's council's fault for not trying to setting kind of budgetary constraints or guidelines around this project, but I think that what we need to do as a council is consider how much money can we put towards this on an annual basis towards trying to achieve this vision. And then once we understand what budgetary constraints we have to operate under, then we can take that, prioritize the various elements and come up with a long plan and how to do it in phases. But I expect that to do it like this with what I am aware of in terms of our budgetary constraints, it's probably going to take 20 years before we can achieve this vision.
Very well, may you.
And I think that's what I would like to see in the next phase is see this analyzed for what is realistically the amount of budget we can put towards it on the annual basis. Now, obviously grants and stuff will supplement that. So if there's matching grants or if there's flat out all, you know, all-inclusive grants, that's great. We can get there faster. But I think we need to, just like we have a recently adopted capital improvement plan, these types of things will have to get plugged into some kind of a long-term plan where we can phase in as we get the money to do it, either by building fund balance or by grants and stuff like that and start working towards it. So that, I think, is that where, what the next step would be with this plan is to break it down to something that's more manageable on an annual basis?
Absolutely, and that's where the committee was.
And we are, yeah, we broke it down in phases.
Okay, because I didn't see anything about phases. I would like to see that.
No, and that's, that's one of the things we're working on. You can see there's a lot of to be determined in there because it's going to be even more than what is shown here. I agreed, I added them up today and I was thinking it was around $250,000 was the upper limit. And I know it will be more than that, depending on the years too. But no, you're...
And again, this is the, the ultimate wish list that we, we asked him to do based on the surveys and what the community input was.
I understand, just like our master.
So, you know, this is something that, you know, is down the road, council will have to just decide what they can and cannot afford and, you know, what the phases are and we go from there.
But you're absolutely right.
I think it's very detailed, I like it. We'll just have to see what we can do with the next step and we can break it down and what can we afford to do and...
Exactly. And I know the committee, they want to keep that part operational. You just don't want to tear things out and leave nothing there.
Right.
So that first phase, I know, well, let's get some grass, we'll get something that we can use it and, and see what that cost is. And that's where we kind of held off to see if, if this is where you want to go, then we can break it down into phases.
And we didn't want to go any further because if this was something that was not the vision, that we didn't know, you know, what, what to expect, so...
This could easily be done in stages.
Yes. We just want to make sure that...
Done, you know, this year, but it has to be completed.
Some landscaping and lighting could be done this year.
Yeah.
The next year could be the, following year could be the, yeah, so... But we just want to make sure if we were on the right track, I guess, and if this is something that council wants to pursue now that we had Ron come in and design it and the committee...
We asked everybody in the community what they wanted.
What they wanted, and the committee has now done its job, so...
I might say too, we've structured this and I've been involved with a lot of projects. We follow the money. And I say that somewhat jolly. I worked on the Flushing Depot and that was a 20-year project. That was a burned-out shell when we started. And the one grant that we went after specifically was, it was offered by the state of Michigan. I think it was for three years. And they received $125,000 and we put that towards restoring the wood floor. And you say, well, how did you get that? Well, I went through the arts and economic, or arts and entertainment?
Culture.
Arts and culture, yes, thank you.
Yeah.
And the pitch we made to them is, well, we're going to teach square dancing in the depot and you've got to have a wood floor to really square dance on. And they loved it. Again, it was a historic structure and we're restoring the original wood floor. It was going to cost $125,000. There's no way they would have done it. Another case in point was we worked with Bauer Farm in Bloomfield. That's owned by the schools. And they wanted to paint the barn and you're not going to get a grant to paint a barn. There's got to be a broader vision. And it was offered by Campbell Soup Company, no relation, so... We, we said, the kids are going there and they're learning where their food comes from. And how can they do it if you don't have a barn? And what color are barns? Well, they're red in our area. And we got a, I don't know, like a $50,000 or $60,000 grant, one of five nationwide that went to the school to paint their barn. And we asked just for $50,000 to paint the barn, no way we would have got it, but we told a story. And this, this whole area that we're sitting, standing in right now tells a story. Amos Orton gave this land or sold it and he had a vision in mind. Nobody ever built on this land next door. And in my mind, we're uncovering this now, is what did he have in mind? He had land further east. This was going to be the center of downtown. And I think there's a story to be told there. So that's why we think this building and that park joined together really can tell that story and help us get that money. So if we have to modify this plan a little bit to do it, yeah, we can do it. It's only a matter, it's kind of a roadmap, not fix and grain or anything like that, so... But I agree with you, Hor, we got to take it piece by piece and see what the total cost is. That's the first thing that a foundation will ask for, well, what's the total project on this? So we have to make a guestment, but we also have to break it down in phases that are manageable too. Wholeheartedly agree.
Anyone pay anything?
Thank you, Ron, I wanted to...
The only thing I had was a couple of things. One thing I noticed, the handicap parking possibly used as a backstage, that was a little bit of concern for me. That's our, that's our only handicap parking.
It is.
Now, whether that's fixed for that would be fabulous because who parks back there to come in this door? I get it, but that was just a thought in my head.
Yep.
We can solve that problem, but we park before the horse. So just keep, I think, keep that in mind with that project is, that's an easy problem to solve, but we do need to.
Yep.
That was why I thought, and then the only other thing that I was thinking was the brick pavers. We are actively trying to get rid of brick pavers specifically for the wear and tear and the maintenance and things like that. Is it possible, was it discussed at all, to consider those on the wall instead of on the ground?
It was.
In any place.
It was, and it still could be. We have the planners, they're more difficult to read when they're on the wall. But a lot of times...
I know that's kind of a concern at the school and at the tree park and everywhere we've done, it's fabulous, it's wonderful, but long-term, you know, is that just a consideration because we've kind of learned our...
And I kind of, I took, I challenged the committee on this because I think a lot of times the pavers, when they go in, they don't go in in a proper base. And I know at LaPierre County Courthouse, and I would invite everyone to go up there, those pavers that lead up to the front steps of the courthouse, I think they were installed about 25 years ago, but they were put on a roadbed base. And it's only pedestrians that use it and in equipment, the snow removal equipment, detractors that go in and clean it. So we were very digressive where we put these bricks, not in a main pathway or anything like that. But I think if we get a good solid base, we should be able to drive trucks, pickups, as well as snow removal equipment, things like that across them without damage. But yes, we can look at that further.
Yeah, I know, just some little things, but those were just kind of because it was so amazing, that's all I got. So, thank you very much.
I've driven on some of those cobblestone streets in Europe and they hold up pretty well if they're done.
They're not the easiest to walk, I know, either.
Well, and ours are what, 30-some, 40-some years old and it's time, right, 90s? So, you know, yes, time eventually, but...
And it's even like the, the concrete, you know, we talked about, well, if we're going after a sustainability and environmental grant, maybe that's just not concrete, but it's like this porous concrete where we store the rainfall underneath. You know, it's a, it's an automatic drain, we're not taking it to a sewer system.
And that actually would be better if you have trees and bushes planted here because their roots always spread out.
Yes, yes.
And that's what I was going to ask about the lighting, is there any way to do any sustainable lighting instead of adding the expense of the lights? Is there anything we can do to capture the solar and things like that to...
Absolutely, you know, that roof of the, yeah, with the roof here. I'd rather see it rather on a historic building, I'd rather see it on the pavilion. But yeah, we've got a whole, you know...
Village offices.
There we go, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, we tailor that, those types of things to whatever grant we're going after. But I think the handicap parking, that's easy. We didn't change anything out there, so the same amount of space is there, just as we highlight it, I guess, yeah.
And I know we talked about that when we were moving the ramp, adjusting handicap parking.
Yep, but it would be a good location for it, yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. And I just, I wanted just to do a shout out to the committee and thank them. Brian, thank you. Matt Jenkins, our DDA director. Patty Olson, our planning commissioner. And Paul Amori, who is the DDA secretary, I believe, correct? That was a great group and Ron, you were a pleasure to work with. Thank you so, so much.
With that, as Ron said, this gives us a very good roadmap for the next 20 years of improving the space. This is written in a way that it is tailor-made to apply for grants. One of the most time-consuming parts of a grant, a grant application is trying to line up all the things you want to say for it. And Ron has already done that for us. So this is done in a fantastic and very helpful way. Because this is a new business item, it is an actionable item. I would recommend that the village council make a motion to adopt the Heritage Park Design Report as presented. Make it official.
Make a motion to adopt the Heritage Park Design Report as presented.
Support.
A motion on the table by trustee Green, support by trustee Rendezzo. Any questions or comments at this time? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you, that motion carries 5-0. Thank you again, Ron, we appreciate your time. Next up is the approval of the Ortonville Downtown Development Authority Budget for the fiscal year 2022, 2023. Who's going to start us off?
I'm going to turn that over to DDA president to plan.
Thank you, Courtney, if you don't mind, you can go ahead and start us off.
Who is going to introduce me?
Mark.
That was a fabulous introduction, Ron. I know, I need no... I need no...
Ms. Courtney McClery.
So in front of you, you should have our super-long, two-page budget. And I am here for any questions.
And also I know that is as well just by chance because we did have some questions on ours, it's just how it was lined up, so. You have your backup plan too. Anybody have any questions, any thoughts?
So you had the opportunity before the meeting this evening to review.
In actuality, we do not have a motion to entertain a motion. Anything you wanted to say at all before we do entertain a motion?
Thank you, Ron. You did a wonderful presentation on behalf of the DDA. That really was very beautiful. As you can see, our budget is complete, thorough, balanced, all the good things it should be. What else, what do we talk about? You can see our revenues at the bottom of the first little section there. Our revenues from 2021, 2022 are in the amount of $141,947.63. Our TIF is usually around $75,000, that's our funding that we get based on tax increment financing. So we are, do you know the number? Who wouldn't, would you? 65%. What do they call that? Funded. It's funded through addition, outside additional revenue sources. It's not from the TIF directly. They have a term for it that I can never remember the... I can never remember the term for it, but it's good, anyway. The more funded we are...
It's good.
From outside resources, revenue sources outside of the TIF, the higher that is, the better we are. So 65% is very high. So anyways, yes, I am here to answer any questions you may have.
How about your downtown tree program? Where do you guys stand on that right now? Just curious.
Ryan might be able to answer that better than I can simply because Ryan is on that committee and he and Matt have talked.
And just keep in mind, we are on the budget.
Okay.
And so I just would like to work on that. And then if you had questions like...
Is that a line item?
At a non-agenda item or during the, your moment, I would love to share them.
Okay, then let me ask this then. So for your priority projects that you have in the budget?
Yep.
Are these in order of priority?
No.
They're not?
They're not in order of priority.
Okay.
They're just in order of, you mean, I'm sorry, 248775750?
Yes.
050?
Yes.
Yeah, that's just...
What you're focusing on?
All of those pri, none of those priorities get priority over another one.
Okay, perfect.
It's kind of like whatever comes first.
Yep, okay, very good. That's all I wanted to know.
So if we get all the stuff in for the light poles, then that's what will happen first.
Right, right.
So it's no, no priority over, over another one. We do have a second tier of priority projects, but those aren't on here.
This is a lot already?
Um, I mean, most of it's already in progress, so... Let's see. Retail challenge. Mobile app, historical walking tour, heritage garden meal program, light pole banner, tree program, we finding, they're all already in progress, so...
You guys do a fantastic job.
Thank you.
What are you looking to do is entertain a motion?
Are we approving this then?
We haven't, don't have a motion yet.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the proposed DDA budget as presented.
Support.
We have a motion on the table by trustee Hayden, supported by trustee Nigel. Do we have questions or comments at this?
I would only request that it say that the motion read for the fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Yes, I will amend my motion to include that.
I'll support that.
Sorry, Hillary.
So questions or comments?
You guys do a lot of good work on a limited budget, so we appreciate it.
While I have you, the, I know, Tom, you mentioned the fireworks. That is primarily a Friends of Amos-run program, not a DDA program. So those, all that funding, some of it is through our partners program because we accept that as one of the events that our partners, our sponsors can sponsor. So then we send that money as a packet over to Friends of Amos, but Friends of Amos is responsible for the fireworks. We did well this year. We have a little bit left over for next year, so that's good.
Wonderful.
But as with everything, the price is just going to continue to go up. So I say we have a little bit left over for next year, we have a little bit left over for next year. But again, that's, that's separate from the DDA budget. Guys, still having any questions about anything on here?
Ready for a vote?
Rather unfortunate. Are they unfortunate?
If we could please... Hayden?
Yes.
Nyvalt?
Yes.
Randazzo?
Green?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries five zero.
Thank you, everybody.
Item C this evening is the approval of the Village of Ortonville budget adjustments for the fiscal year 2021, 2022.
I can start, um, as part of the budget process, it's necessary, necessary to close out each fiscal year with a balanced budget. To that end, your packet contains recommended budget adjustments for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year. Um, I, I always like to say that budgets are good for about twenty-four hours, so after adopted, anything can change. Um, no budget can perfectly predict every account's end balance, uh, we do our best to predict what it will be, but, um, you know, things happen. So having closed the books on 2021, 2022 at the end of June, uh, these adjustments are recommended by our village treasurer, who can also answer your questions, um, as they come. Uh, budget adjustments are required, um, your packet also contains information about our annual audit to be conducted beginning, uh, the week of August eighth, 2022. I recommend the village council move to approve the 2021, 2022 budget adj, uh, budget adjustments as presented.
I make a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 budget adjustments as presented.
Support.
We have a motion on the table by trustee Hayden, supported by trustee Nyvalt. Any questions or comments at this time?
Um, is there anything that you wanted to tell us about, since you have all this step in yellow? Was there any thing in particular? And if not, that's okay.
No.
Because I, I got my questions answered earlier.
There were, there's several items there that you're familiar with that are, you know, greater or less than what we predicted. So some of we, in the 2021, 2022 project we accomplished, twenty...
I know, right?
Uh, last year we did a lot of very big projects in the village, right? And some of those costs were not in line with what we had estimated. So there's, that's, um, a reason for several of the adjustments. Um, and then there's others that were adjusted up or down for reasons that are pretty evident, I think, for the most part. But if you do have questions, we'd be happy to explain.
Thank you, Ms. Beth, for all this work.
Beth, is there anything specific you would like to add? Anybody, questions, comments?
Yeah, I do have a comment and observation. Uh, in particular, I'm looking at the last page of the budget adjustments at the beginning of fund balance and fund balance. Um, we are significantly reduced in fund balance, and I remember when we passed our 2022 to 2023 budget, it was relying on some rather heavy output from our fund balances to make that balanced budget. Now that this budget is finalized and we see the significant reduction of the fund balance, I would think it would be prudent of us to go back and revisit the 2022, 2023 budget when we have a chance and just validate whether we still can, uh, afford the budget as it was approved or if we need to make adjustments based upon the new fund balance now that this fiscal year is close. I just want to make that observation and ask us to think about that, uh, whether we should follow that process to make some updates earlier in the 2023 year, to 2024 year rather than...
Anybody else? Alright, are we ready for a vote? Nyvalt?
Yes.
Randazzo?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries five zero. Next up I do this evening is the consideration of the request to schedule a presentation by SCI for electric vehicle charging stations. And we will begin with manager Mayans.
Yeah, I will just, uh, before we let her off the hook too easy, just wanted to say thanks, Beth, for all your work on that and the budget. Uh, the audit is already coming up fast, so got a couple weeks to get ready for that. So thank you for your continued efforts on keeping us in line with sound fiscal policy. Yes. Uh, next up, the, um, electric vehicle charging stations. So we've talked about EVs a couple times in a couple different ways. Um, I met recently with trustee Nyvalt as well as SCI, the State Contracting, Inc. Um, their, their director, boss? Big cheese owner. But he is a local contractor, uh, headquartered on Dixie Highway. Um, he has installed EV chargers in other municipalities nearby, he's worked with others, um, on this same project. Uh, your packet contains a sample contract from SCI. Um, and, um, DDA director Jenkins and I have discussed a couple times, uh, with EV chargers in the downtown district and all the benefits that could, uh, that could yield for the village as well as for the DDA. Um, adopting EVs, uh, is encouraged by places like SEMCOG, other entities that we work with very closely. Oakland County, um, is moving quickly as the soon-to-be headquarters of EV for GM. Um, Oakland County is very engaged in adopting EVs all over the place. So getting on the EV map has all kinds of good economic benefits. Um, the next step, if we choose to pursue this path, is to invite SCI to come present to the village council and to work towards an agreement with Council Kinson. I intend to continue this conversation with both the planning commission and DDA at their next meetings to solicit input and feedback and work toward an agreement with State Contracting, Inc. Prior to our next regular village council meeting. It's informational at this time, but I welcome any feedback and comment.
What is the cost?
About fifteen hundred dollars.
Per?
So, uh, we walked around the village and located several places where, um, EV chargers would be possible. Uh, and each of them have some, uh, some needs. So some of them have an electric pole nearby and we would need to establish service, um, there. So we would work with DT to drop a line, essentially, um, install service there and then hook up the station to them. So there's some cost in getting set up.
Every fifteen hundred dollars per the six locations?
No, the, the six is the, if possible.
That seems like a lot.
It does, so...
A lot?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I didn't clarify. The, the plan would be to do one, as a, let's see how much use it gets, uh, how popular it is. It would also put us on the EV map, which is very helpful for, I don't own an EV myself, but I know people have a fear of running out, so they're always looking at where's the next closest space where I could charge my car. Um, and so it would get us on the map, which is a big deal at this point in time. Um, so we were, we were looking at citing one charging station that it would be able to charge two vehicles at the same time. So install one, um, on village property, see how it goes, and then consider more in the future.
Aren't there offsetting revenues that we would get returned back to us from the company who's managing those?
Yes, great question. So the contract breaks that down a little bit. Um, the, uh, there's a revenue per kilowatt hour that we would receive, it's a trickle, it's not a huge moneymaker. Uh, but there is some revenue there.
It's cents, but...
Cent on the kilowatt hour.
But it's, at least it's not us having to pay.
Right.
And it's something we've specifically been working towards with RRC. And as you say, at the county level, that's something that's specifically been active, so it's nice to be, um, able to pursue something. We know we've always had on our radar, but yeah.
It is.
Have taken that next step yet.
It's one that Matt and I both have pursued in a couple different ways. And, um, one of the big entities that sells them essentially to municipalities, there's a three-year waitlist, just to be... To get on that list, you have to have it cited and approved by an electrician and signed off by your planning commission. And then you wait for three years before you can get the actual charger. And SCI has chargers and you could install them tomorrow if we approve it, so.
And that's when I made the contact, because it was like a three-year wait, wait a minute, no, I, I think you could do better. So, um, and Duane is local, his kids went to Brandon School.
Owns property in the village.
They live, yeah, they live here still, so, um, and that's nice to support local as well.
I believe they've talked about electric vehicles and the future of, of automotive in Michigan and how do we go to still be a player in that area? And I know that electric vehicle is a big part of it. I don't know if there's any possibilities with SEMCOG for any type of assistance or support grants or anything of that that could help offset any costs we would have, but that might be something we should up on is find out if SEMCOG has anything specifically for southeast Michigan.
They just had a webinar this week, SEMCOG did, uh, for EVs.
Yeah.
I signed up for it, but I couldn't make it.
I know SEMCOG has a lot of interest in it and those, and they, they do have a lot of resources for EVs, so that'd be something we can follow.
Good call, I'll see what's out there.
Yeah, because I was gonna do that webinar and I couldn't, and, but I do have the name of it and they will put it online so I can send it to you guys.
Yep, happy to follow up, and Matt. Um, it is a cost, there is a, a cost element to it, but it is a cost we would recoup over time. And I don't think that much time, and it's not, uh, the, the cost isn't that great compared to the benefit. Um, having stations in your downtown means people are parked in your downtown for an extended amount of time. So they'll swing by Papabelas and grab some pizza while they're charging, they'll stop into little things, it's a, it's a good thing for a downtown.
That's exactly what I thought. If somebody stops to charge a vehicle, they're going to be here at least a half hour and they're going to take time to walk around and see what's around, and that's in the, you know, that helps promote the, uh, the downtown area, which we want.
And it's a good opportunity.
Which they could, um, they would, they would pay to use it, and they could. Um, I walked around, just to compare, I walked through Holly has two sites with two chargers each, so there's four now. Um, some right by the depot park, Crapo Park.
Yeah.
Um, and then others right by Red Devil, that's, I just know it is the pizza place, but, um, near Battle Alley. So there's, um, several spots that get used in Holly, and I spoke with their village manager as well about their working with Duane and SCI, and, uh, he only had good things to say, and so, uh, I was encouraged by that conversation.
Yeah, we would have to do ordinances and signs, um, but, uh, many communities have those already, so it's...
So Ryan, what are you looking for at this time?
Um, just a, a nod to let me pursue it, and then I will invite Duane to our August meeting.
Anyone who has concerns?
Is that the joint meeting or?
No, our August twenty...
Anybody who has concerns? Alright, we're all good.
Okay, and as you get a chance to read through the contract, if you have any feedback or concerns or comments, please forward them to me, and I will, uh, work to address them as we work this through, or revisit in August.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for pursuing.
Next up is the village managers' report, and I will send that over to manager Mayans.
Alright, a couple of things on the village manager report. Um, your packet contains the nine-eight-eight suicide and crisis lifeline. Um, this just, um, this just took effect a couple of weeks ago, you may have seen information about it. Um, it is a direct connection to compassionate, accessible care and support for anyone experiencing mental health-related distress. So, uh, I just wanted to make sure that's in our packet, everyone's aware of that. Feel free to hang that up if you'd like to, any questions on that?
That's great.
Okay, the next item is related to the bridge work that's happening in the village. Um, you'll see some updated information from what I first sent out. Um, the work began last week, the week of July eighteenth. Um, beginning on South Street, so that bridge closed, um, last Tuesday on the nineteenth. Uh, it is the bridge getting the most extensive work, it's underway. Um, if you've been down there, you'll see it is open to pedestrians, but the bridge is currently milled. Um, and there's some more work to be done, uh, so it will be closed for a couple of weeks. Uh, Ball Street will be closed and the Mill Street parking lanes will be closed in the near future. Any questions on bridge things? You guys have been hearing about it for about a year and a half, so. Any questions, let me know, forward them to the village office, please. And I'm not a graphic designer, but I made that graphic, so that's what the record shows. Item C is the building department report for the second quarter. Any questions to me or our village clerk?
Just back to the previous one, I was wondering, because I noticed that at South Street, at least last time I went up that way, it seemed that the sign for the detour, uh, was not right down at M-15, but a little bit up, which means that traffic could shoot off there before they realize that there's a detour. Was there a reason it wasn't placed more towards the end of, uh, the road where it's visible?
Um, there's some communication back and forth on that particular sign, so. Uh, it's been corrected as of now, I'm pretty sure that northbound traffic has a sign before they turn. But if you see anything, let me know, and we'll continue to work through it.
Yeah, if it's been corrected, no, no issue. I just, when I first noticed it, I was like, wait a minute, it's, it's...
There were some issues, day one.
Okay.
But our DPW staff was instrumental in working out the bugs. Yep. Alright, back to C, any questions on building department permits? One's going twice. Letter D is the Veterans Resource Fair flyer for the August eleventh Veterans Resource Fair. If you'd like to make sure you get that information and can share it freely.
Oh, I can't go to that, I'm going to be at the food truck barbecue thing.
This one's done at noon, so you can do both.
There you go.
That depends on traffic from South.
Um, only other item would be the, um, the end of June, I attended the cyber security roundtable hosted by Congresswoman Stockin. Uh, so I'm, it was, uh, municipal leaders from all over her district, which spans from parts of Lansing to over here. Um, very informational, lots of good stuff, um, there was nothing really to put in a packet to discuss it. Um, but it was a, a roundtable conversation with municipal leaders, uh, the congresswoman, um, agents from homeland security, the secret service, the FBI, the Michigan State Police, um, a lot of the, the people in the cyber security world. So the next time our IT committee meets, we'll discuss in a little more detail. Um, but, uh, it was a very fascinating conversation with, uh, who to call if and when a municipality has a cyber incident, because it happens every day to municipalities as close as Clarkston. So it's one to be constantly vigilant about. That is all for my report.
Next up this evening is the public comment at this time, it is on non-agenda items only, please. If you have anything that you'd like to share with us, questions, comments, um, please go ahead, raise your hand, stand up. Uh, keep in mind you do have three minutes, and it is on non-agenda items only at this time.
Please.
Jump in at the bit.
Good evening, everybody. Before I get started, I'd like to say that I've had the honor and the privilege to work with Ron Campbell on different projects over the last few years. He's not only an incredible asset in Oakland County, but he's an asset to all these communities he works in. Uh, my name is Bob Hoffman and I'm running for reelection as Oakland County Commissioner. Presently, I represent Highland Row, Springfield, Holly and Groveland. With the redistricting, they've added Brandon Township, three precincts in White Lake in the village of Ortonville. I was born in Pontiac and raised in Waterford. I grew up at the best time in the best place with the best parents. Every father on the street, including my own, my seven uncles were all World War II veterans. We were not only raised by our parents, but every other parent on the street. And I say that our parents gave us everything we needed, but anything we wanted, we had to go get a job. I would not trade my incredible childhood for anything. And I've often said that, uh, I've gotten older, I'd give it all up if I could sit down for one more hour and talk to my mom and dad. Our parents taught us the promise of America, where if you have an idea, you're willing to work hard, a little luck, you'll accomplish everything you set out to do. And I love being an Oakland County Commissioner, because like being a member of village council, this is a level of government you can actually help people. And one of my favorite quotes in life is from the Dalai Lama, who said, "Our sole purpose in life should be to help others, and if you can't help them, at least don't hurt them." I expend my time, my energy and my money representing my constituents. A few years ago, there was a family in a property dispute with a local municipality. Someone suggested, why don't you call Bob Hoffman your county commissioner, because he's a real advocate for property rights. Their initial response was, why should we call him? He probably won't help us because he's a Republican. So anyway, they eventually called me and I went to see them. And one of the first things I said to them was, before I put my foot in my mouth, I'm going to have your entire twenty-acre parcel surveyed and I'm going to pay for it. We got the survey back and along with other issues we already knew we had. We discovered the entire parcel was landlocked by a piece owned by Consumers Energy. But the real tragedy of this story is, this mom and dad and two pre-teen children had no place to live. So they set up a camp around ten of the twenty acres that was not in dispute. And they lived there for over five years through some of the coldest winters we've ever had. And I said to them on many occasions, I'm sorry this is happening to you, but I'm glad it happened to someone like you, because anybody else probably would just roll over, walk to... but I'm glad it happened to someone like you, because anybody else probably would just roll over, walked away, and we'd have never learned what you went through. Well, it worked its way through the courts. Family ultimately went, won, and got their property back. And actually, the last piece of the puzzle was just put into place a few weeks ago, and I thank Consumers Energy, because now the family has permanent ingress and egress to their property. Some people say Bob Hoffman doesn't need this job, and that's true. I'm not running for a paycheck. And isn't refreshing to have somebody who wants to serve the community, and they're not doing it because they need the money? Isn't also further refreshing to know that you have somebody who's not beholden to anybody? Another one of my favorite quotes in life is from Sir Winston Churchill, who said, "What is the use of living if not to strive for noble causes, to make this muddled world a better place for those who will live in it after we are gone?" I want to thank all of you for your public service. God bless you and your families. God bless America, and thank you for considering me for this position. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Non-agenda items only at this time. Next on our agenda is the additional items from the trustees, and we start with you.
August 13th is going to be our last outdoor movie department, fourteen, fourteen, on Dally Road. We will start approximately nine, yeah, it's free, um but there's also going to be some going on earlier today. Uh just follow the Brandon Parks and Recreation, uh this location for further information. And uh I will be at your base with Ryan sometime in the next two weeks to go over the beautification awards things and also getting caught up with Brad and Ryan on the concession stand.
Nope, I think I covered everything. Just another reminder to please get out and vote uh this second.
Yes, I just want to compliment the, our DPW department. They did a real nice job of putting down the parking space for us along the pavement on Mill Street. I'm looking forward to see the center stripe run down that when when that can be done. Um so I just want to say appreciate what they've done for that and all that they do around the town. I also wanted to mention this for the benefit of the public. I received this survey in the mail that says on Ortonville Village Survey enclosed, and what it surprised me at first because I wasn't aware that we were doing a a survey. And then I looked more closely and realized that this is not a survey from the village, so I just wanted to as a provide some public information that if anybody in our community received this survey that says Ortonville Village Survey, it was not anything that the village of Ortonville or our government did or sent out. It was sent by the group Ortonville Residents for Action, which is based in Bloomfield Hills, Michigan. So just for clarification sake, for residents, this is not something that we sent out to you guys. And that's it.
Thank you.
I have nothing, though. I was on vacation, so I'm not in the area for a little bit, so I'm back in.
Ryan, anything you wanted to add that you had left?
I don't think so.
I will kind of tail off of Larry's conversation with, um thank you for the DPW for all the things that they have been doing. We all know many people that do have to work outside in this heat, but they are absolutely amazing and continue um with everything that gets thrown on them, even at the end of the day when they are exhausted and had enough. We are also well aware that it is now insect time, and there are many items that they're putting out. I'll use the term fires, what they are not using fire, taking care of, cause they're putting out fires in every direction. Um and so just to keep that in mind, I think for the community, it's very important to understand that they are well aware, and they are working as hard as they can, and for us just to be able to remind people when it comes up that that they um work their buns off. I was happy to remind somebody on social media that they're more than welcome to come and volunteer to do it themselves if they're concerned that our guys who work overtime every day when it's 95 out just haven't found that extra hour. So plugged to the how wonderful they are. We know they are, but we cannot say enough. And I think that's all I have at this time. Looks like we're all good.
Some who would like to entertain a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
We have a motion on the table by trustee Nyveld, supported by trustee Green. Questions, comments? It is 8:36, and have a fabulous evening. Thank you very much.